Thank you, Mayor. Today's Ash Wednesday, so I just want to draw attention to that as well as leer en español y orar en inglés. Salmo ciento dos dice yo va escucha mi oración y llegue a ti mi clamor. No escondas de mí tu rostro en el día de mi angustia. Inclina a mí tu oído. Apresúrate a responderme el día que te invocaré. La palabra de Dios, gracias a Dios. Gracious God, we thank you for this day where we remember your love for us through Christ Jesus. I thank you for our mayor. I thank you for our city council, our staff, all those, Lord, who work toward a better city, toward honoring you and serving your people of Baldwin Park. We ask for your grace, your mercy every morning, every day. We may experience your wisdom. Lead us and guide us, Lord, to right decisions, to justice, Lord, to promote, Lord, the welfare of the people. We thank you, Father, Lord, and we pray for your renewed strength today. We pray for those who are suffering, many through COVID-19 related illnesses, those who are in a grieving process, Lord, our losses here in Baldwin Park. We pray for families today that they would be comforted and experience your presence today in a real and personal way. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you for that, Pastor Flores. And I believe at this point we have a pledge of allegiance. Councilmember Garcia, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Is Councilmember Garcia here?
She was.
Okay, Councilmember Hernandez, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes, sir. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And with this republic
which stands when nation under God.
Liberty, justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you for that. City clerk, roll call, please. City clerk here? Chief W B C, can you do roll call?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Avila. I'm sorry, Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Danny Damian.
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Present.
Mayor Protem Avila.
Here.
Mayor Lozano.
I'm not here.
Sorry, Mayor Estrada.
I'm hurt, I'm hurt, I'm hurt, but I am here. Here and hurt, but that's okay. City attorney, do we have anything to report out?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council did consider multiple items in closed session. No final action was taken and therefore no reportable action. That concludes my report.
Great, and of course, we do have to announce council members are also members of the Board of Directors of the Housing Authority and Finance Authority, which are concurrently convening with the city council this evening. And each council member is paid an additional stipend of $30 for attending the Housing Authority meeting and $50 for attending the Finance Authority meeting. And of course, if you are if you are interested in seeing this meeting in Spanish, you can. Audio streaming is in Spanish, is available and is listed on our agenda for those wishing to participate in Spanish. Si usted le gustaría ver esta esta reunión en español, es posible. Y está. And I'm trying to like hand that también. Thank you. And I believe at this point we're going on to proclamations, commendations, and presentations. Certificates in recognition of the 2021 Food Drive Volunteers. Councilmember Hernandez, do you have a list in front of you of?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So back on January the 13th, the city of Baldwin Park, along with its partners, hosted the, again, the Baldwin Park Food Drive. This is the second time that we've done this in such a collaborative manner with UCF CW Local 1428, the Los Angeles Regional Food Bank, Hill of the Solis, and various others partners. You know, the first time we did this back in, I believe, maybe it was April of 2020, we fed close to over 13,000 individuals. And it was a fantastic event. And because of that and because of the great staff that we had, we were able to partner up once again with the same organization. And we hosted another one back in January, this time with the tremendous work of our community volunteers and our city staff. We were able to support, you know, close to about 7,000, 8,000 residents, not only here at Baldwin Park, but also our surrounding communities. So with that, I'm going to read the proclamation, then I'm going to also name out names, the individuals afterwards. But first and foremost, I certainly want to thank, again, just our local partners that we have, such as the Valley County Water District. They've been extremely helpful, not only to us, but also to the unified, to the Baldwin Park Unified School District, when they first started handing out lunches to their students. So again, this is, you know, neighbors helping neighbors, partners helping partners, all for the same goal. So with that, I'd like to read off the proclamation and then I will follow that with the names of our recognized. Here we go. 2001 Food Drive Volunteers. The city council commends you for your help, commitment, and participation in the City of Baldwin Park Food Drive giveaway. We appreciate that you've made the time to volunteer and assist in making this drive a successful event. Thank you for the favorable recognition you bring to our community. So with that, we will start naming the individuals. I'm sure there's maybe one or two that we haven't, that we may have missed off the list, but we will certainly recognize them at a later time. And then also, my understanding is all these volunteers have received their their certificates already, so they should have them at home. And we'll start off with, again, Mr. Alfonso Artega, David Castro, Jessica Joyner, Joe Jeski, General Manager for the Valley County Water District, Jose Martinez, and also Valley County Water District Board Member Ralph Galvin. And then also with the same organization, Susan Rovilla and Tara Robinson. Along with them, we also have LA Voice and their members that came out and helped us during this period of time. And we have Mrs. Beatrice Solivar, Mrs. Yolanda Martinez, Mrs. Maria Carrillo, and Mrs. Sotchil Escalante. And then we also have one more individual that we don't have listed in the agenda, but he was also there. And I believe he received his certificate or will be soon, Mr. Ricardo Vasquez. So again, I want to make sure we thank them for everything that they've done, not only on that day, but all the other times. I also want to make sure that we take this opportunity to also thank the Red Cross. Once again, in their distribution, back on February 9th, they provided about eight pallets worth of hand sanitizer bags. And what that's going to happen is, as of tomorrow, the Baldwin, the Baldwin Park Unified School District will be picking up their share of the hand sanitizers in which every student in the district will be receiving a bag similar to this with about 10 hand sanitizers, hand sanitizers in various scents such as Awesome Apple, Blueberry Raspberry Bliss, Gravy Grape, and Unscented. So again, this is because of the partnership that we have with the American Red Cross that we are able to allocate each of these bags to every single one of our students in the Baldwin Park community. Along with the Baldwin Park Unified School District, we've also made these available and we provided these to the St. John's Baptist School also. You know, this is something that we, the city, has been giving, not only to our seniors during the weekly, you know, food deliveries, but also to our homeless community. So this is very helpful from the Red Cross. And I know this is something that we talked about two weeks ago, but now we actually have something in our hand that we could show to the community and make them aware of what it is that we're actually be doing. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that. And of course, thank you to all the volunteers volunteering their time during pandemic. Very important, and it shows a strong sense of relationship and community that Baldwin Park has with its residents. And I am sure that I'm grateful, of course, and of course, all of my colleagues are as well. I know that Councilmember Damian wanted to recognize Mr. David. So Councilmember Damian, please take it away. And excuse me, before I forget, I know that Senator Susan Rubio also, I believe, is sending out certificates to those volunteers. I just wanted to mention that before I forget. And then, of course, Councilmember Damian, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, before I move on to the proclamation for David Gaither, I just wanted to see if I can say in Spanish, kind of echo what Councilmember Hernandez just said about the volunteers. Quiero dar las gracias a todos los voluntarios que salieron para la distribución de comida. En especialmente quiero agradecer a Beatriz Andoval, Yolanda Martinez, María Carrillo, y Sotchil Escalante de LA Voice. Solo porque sé que no nomás han sido muy instrumental durante la pandemia, pero también han trabajado mucho por la comunidad en muchos eventos anteriores. So antemano les quiero dar muchísimas gracias por todo lo que hacen en nuestra comunidad. And with that, I'll move on to the proclamation in honor of David H. Gaither. It's going to be presented to David H. Gaither's son, Richard Gaither and family. I believe we have Rosie Gaither, his wife, here as well. And I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation. David H. Gaithers, A Celebration of Life, February 22nd, 1953 to October 27th, 2020. Whereas David Gaither came to the city of Baldwin Park in 1978, where he purchased a small modest home near Saravista High School. David worked for the United Parcel Service UPS building in Baldwin Park for 37 years. David coached junior All-American football when his son began to play youth sports and was a huge part of the Roadrunner's success as an organization from 1983 to 1995. He coached at various levels as well as joined the board of organization during his tenure with the Roadrunners. David did not stop there with the city's youth sports. When his daughter began to play softball, he got involved at Eastside Little League from 1984 to 1998. He coached and also became a board member of the league or for the league. David had the passion for youth sports and worked at Baldwin Park High School from 1998 to 2012. During this time, he coached football and softball for the high school. He coached the freshmen and assisted the JV and varsity football teams. And he also coached the JV and varsity softball teams for five years. David was known as the voice of the Braves football because not only was he a coach, he was also the Friday Night Lights announcer. David not only coached youth sports in the city of Baldwin Park, he went on to coach within various cities and high schools in El Monte, La Puente, Temple City, West Covina, also at St. Lucy's High School, Montebello High School, and Gabrielino High School. During his overall coaching tenure, he coached from 1983 to 2020. David H. Gaither was respected by so many. He was not only a great mentor to those he coached, but also kept in contact with them and remained good friends with each and every one of them. David is survived by his wife Rosie Gaither, his son Richard Gaither, and his daughter Leslie Jimenez, along with their spouses and five grandchildren. Coach Dave will be missed, but never forgotten. Mayor, do you want to read the bottom of the proclamation?
You can go ahead and finish reading.
Now, therefore.
Has my name, right?
Yeah.
I guess.
Go ahead and read the bottom part.
Okay, sorry about that. Now, therefore, I, Emmanuel J. Estrada, Mayor of the city of Baldwin Park, along with Mayor Protem Alejandro Avila, councilmembers Daniel Damian, Monica Garcia, Paul C. Hernandez, City Treasurer Maria E. Contreras, and City Clerk Marlon Garcia, do hereby proclaim February 22, 2021, as David H. Gaither Day in the city of Baldwin Park. We honor him for being a long-term resident, his longstanding career with UPS United Parcel Service, and many years of service as a respectable coach with youth sports in the community of Baldwin Park, as well as other surrounding communities.
And with that, we present the proclamation to David H. Gaither's family. We have the family here, if they want to maybe speak, Rosie.
I just want to thank everybody for this great honor. It's truly appreciated and very well, again, very well appreciated at this point. I'm at a loss for words. I'm just so attached by this whole situation.
Thank you, Rosie, and we send you all of our love and hugs. I know Richard is here, your son, Richard, if you want to say a couple of words.
Thanks, Danny. I want to say thanks from our family. My dad put in a lot of great years with the city's youth, and he loved the city's youth so much that he kept coaching. He kept coming back to the city as well, whether it was through youth sports or whether it was through high school sports. There couldn't be a better way to honor, you know, my dad and for what he did with the city and how much he loved the city to actually be able to honor, you know, his birthday that's coming up within the city. So I definitely appreciate everything that you've done for this.
Thank you, and thank you. It was an honor for us to, as a council, to recognize him and all his years of service. He was a very great, not only a friend to many of us, but he was someone that, you know, anyone can reach out to at any point in time, and he was always willing to help out. So thank you guys very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Danny.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Damian, and of course, thank you to the Gaither family. It's very important to keep our kids, you know, involved in youth recreation. And I'm very grateful to know that somebody like your father and your family member was involved in our community and making sure that kids were staying in line and staying healthy. So thank you for that. And I believe next we have legislative, a legislative update by Senator Susan Rubio.
Hi, everyone. It's so good to be here. I know that you have a short timeline, but I have so much to share with you. And, you know, I have so much good news for our community. So I'm going to make sure to take a little bit of my time explaining it. I'm going to have to skip through some of these slides because there's a lot of information that I I know it's too much for a council meeting. So can we go to the next slide, please? So I just wanted to really quickly just highlight what's happening with the Sangro Valley Regional Housing Trust. My first year, I passed SB 751, which was a bill to create a collaboration between cities. And so I just wanted to share that currently there's 21 cities that are joining the trust, including Baldwin Park. I was able to bring $5.6 million from state, from the state funding to the COG and just wanted to report that there's three shovel-ready projects that are occurring in the works and are going to build 125 housing units focused primarily on affordable affordability. It's for our veterans and supportive permanent housing. And so I hope to be able to bring a lot more dollars this year. I'm fighting for $10 million for the Regional Housing Trust. So again, it's just helping spruce up not only a housing production, but also invigorate the economy. Next slide, please. And well, if you don't mind, I'm not sure who's handling this, but it's okay. We can just remove it, and I don't mind just talking from memory. There's a lot of information, and I know that this is going to take a little time. Just real quickly, I also wanted to highlight for our community that we just passed COVID-19 Tenure Relief Act. I know that there was a misconception that a moratorium on rents meant forgiveness of rent, and it really wasn't the case. But through SB 91, we were able to put $2.6 billion aside to be able to pay the debt. And the way it works really quickly, it was a really balanced approach. I know that also we have landlords and folks that own homes that were struggling to pay their mortgage. So what this bill does, it does support landlords. It offers landlords 80% of what their tenants owe. And they take advantage of this, then they have to forgive the remainder balance from their tenant. It's an opt-in program, so the landlords decide not to take this opportunity. We also have another avenue for tenants to be able to petition the state for the rent that is due. So it's two avenues. I also wanted to report that, I'm sorry, can we go to the next slide? So right now, I really wanted to share that we're focusing on housing production because that continues to be a big issue in California. The reason housing is so unaffordable is that we have one unit and there's 10 families fighting for that unit. So what's happening in the real estate market, people are outbidding each other, which really increases the prices of housing. So I was tasked with leading the Senate in producing bills that are going to help with housing production. So I wanted to share that when I came to this working group, I really put on my council hat and I really wanted to make sure that I helped our local community. So there was four principles that I focused on with my working group, and that was putting emphasis on true affordability. Because I know we can produce housing, but it's not always affordable to families. And even, you know, in our communities, we have challenges in terms of making sure that our families can also, you know, young families afford homes. So affordability was one. Number two, we also wanted specific language to protect against gentrification and displacement. A lot of our families are being displaced. So once they leave, it's really difficult for them to get back in a home, and that's also causing the homeless crisis. So we had specific language on displacement and gentrification. The third area that I wanted to focus on, and Shannon could attest to this, I met with 15 city managers two years ago last year, and I continue to engage them on some of the issues that our local communities are facing. And meeting the arena numbers continues to be a difficult task. So I wanted to create policies that really gave cities tools to meet the arena numbers. And lastly, I wanted to focus on equity across our communities. And just really quickly, some of the city managers, well, see, all 15 cities and all 15 city managers, along with council members, asked me to oppose some bills that at the time were going to be detrimental to our communities. It was going to take local control away. So what we did is these bills are a little bit more balanced, and I really wanted to put, you know, local control back in the hands of the council. So some of these bills are really opt-in, so you can use them or not, but still, you know, it follows local ordinance and local control. Next page, please. I just wanted to really quickly remind our council and our residents that through the $5.6 million that I was able to bring to the Sangro Valley, Baldwin Park got $200,000 directly for the city's plan for unhoused individuals. It also allocated $300,000 directly to our police department for body cameras and technology from the $1.2 million that I brought for the region, including for other cities. I wanted to share that I've been really active hosting meals, diaper giveaways. I was able to partner with the school district, and we had backpack giveaways, Chromebooks. And a lot of the essentials that right now our communities are struggling with. I also wanted to share that I was able to at least mitigate some of the challenges that our community was, that we're facing and are still facing as it pertains to EDD and unemployment and disability benefits. So far, we've helped approximately 1,100 constituents resolve their issues. And that's not something that we handle. It's a separate department, but I know how important it is for us to really walk our constituents through the process. So I want to take this time to thank my staff. They've been really active in helping our community and also trying to guide them as to how to get vaccines and make appointments. Can we go to the next slide, please? I think I only see that, but it's okay. If you don't mind, can you remove the slides? Because I'd rather just talk to the council and our residents about a lot of the changes. Today, so much happened, and I'm so excited to share with you. And that's not in the slides because, you know, I just got elevated to leadership in the state senate. So I was tasked with leading the negotiations with the governor and the assembly and the senate to come to an agreement on how we're going to help our communities as it pertains to, you know, businesses that are struggling, our community that's losing their jobs, they're losing their homes. So I have some great news to report. So I was able to negotiate several things. I'm going to go down the list, but I'm going to say a few words in Spanish if I may. And then I'm going to come back to the English. Ahorita le quería decir a la comunidad que esta semana pusimos en el presupuesto del estado de California dinero para la gente inmigrante y gente indocumentada. Es mucha información que dar, so voy a colaborar con LA Voice, las iglesias y la ciudad, para traducir todo esto en español. Tiene ayuda a gente indocumentada y gente que también paga taxes debajo de otros seguros sociales. Pero es mucha información y espero que se conecten con la ciudad y las iglesias. Y LA Voice voy a hablarle con Beatriz Andoval para que ayude a que les llegue esta información en español. Gracias. So one of the things that I wanted to share is we know that our communities are immigrants. We know that we have a lot of undocumented individuals that usually don't have the benefit of some of these policies that we pass. They're left out. And in fact, in the stimulus package from the federal government, a lot of those individuals were left out. And so I wanted to make sure that we include them. So we just negotiated a package called the Golden State Stimulus for Californians. And again, it targeted those particular individuals that were left out. So I'm just going to give you a few examples, but there's so much good that came out of this, and I hope that our community is really happy. For example, we included a $600 one-time refund check for every family that's low income. Of course, there's a qualifier, but most families should be able to apply for the $600. It also included $600 for those undocumented individuals who have an ITIN number, individual taxpayer identification number. In the past, they were left out, and now they can get $600 directly to their households. It also includes, which is, I think, really important. I hear it from Californians, but I hear it in every single community. The one thing we never really pay attention to is our farm workers who are working really hard to put food on our table, and they're the ones that are getting sick and impacted the most. So I am so happy to report that we were able to negotiate $24 million to support them in housing and their family needs. And so that is something that I think our immigrant community should be really happy about, that finally we're putting attention in those workers that really are essential to California. It also includes $35 million. That's going to go immediately to food banks and diaper banks across the state. I know that with COVID, a lot of our nonprofits haven't been able to do fundraising. So this funding is going to go directly to them immediately. And so they're going to be able to continue to help our families with food and diapers and everything else that they need. It also includes $120 million to accelerate financial aid to our community college students, which is something that we've been struggling with, not only $120 million to help with aid, but also $16 million just to help with the process. That means the application and how to get the funding. And lastly, I will say this, our universities and colleges have been cut in the past few years. And this year, we were able to restore $600 million to the CSUs and UCs. So that's also good news. I have professors, teachers, everyone reaching out to me. And so we were able to include a restoration for them. And there's a lot more, but I won't, like I said, I'm going to provide the information, make sure that you put it on your website, and also provide it in Spanish. But the last thing I wanted to say, I know as a local council member, we do need our businesses to succeed. We need those tax dollars to continue our services, to continue what we do as it pertains to after-school programs, the parks, recs. And so this does include help for small businesses. We were able to put in the budget $2 billion for grants that small businesses can petition to help them with anything that they were experiencing during COVID-19. Also, we know that it's difficult because they're still having to pay their fees. So the state is going to give them a two-year waiver where they don't have to pay fees. And that is restaurants, barber shops, and nail salons. And there's a lot of businesses, but again, I'm just giving you a few examples. So for two years, they're going to have a waiver, and they don't have to pay those fees to give them a little bit of a reprieve. Also, we're going to give them up to $150,000 tax write-off for any expenses incurred during COVID-19. The good news is that some of the businesses asked for $50,000 in PPP assistance. And it was expected for them to pay it back. Not only do they don't have to, but they're going to be able to use that as a write-off. And so again, there's a lot of help in that regard. And let me see what else. Well, I'll leave it at that. There's so much more in this budget. We've been working, or at least I've been working for the last three years, sorry, three months negotiating and trying to come to a consensus with the assembly and the governor, and it finally happened. There was a press release out today. So this is going to be immediate dollars. Typically, you know, things have to go through the legislative session. They get passed around August and July, and they don't become law until next year. We know and recognize the urgency and how much our community is hurting. So that's going to be done immediately. It has an urgency clause, so we don't have to wait for that funding. So again, I could continue to talk a lot about all the policies we're working on, but I know time is limited, and I will say my door is open. And I will say my my door is open for anyone that has any questions, that wants to engage me. But lastly, I will say this, I also do belong to a separate uh lead group in the state senate. And I think it's important to to highlight that because it's called the Wildfire Climate Change Resiliency Plan for California. I think some of us saw the fires come really close from the Bobcat Fire. I've never seen them so close to my backyard. And so I think it's important to recognize that in the last five years, climate change has really devastated California. The last five years have been the deadliest, the most destructive in terms of structure and loss of life. So right now, I'm uh I'm the chair of the committee that's handling the policies uh to help um mitigate some of the devastation from wildfires, get ahead of the wildfires, provide uh loans and grants to make sure that families have enough funding to retrofit their their homes and uh make sure that when the fires come, they're already prepared. But lastly, I also, we're putting a climate change resiliency plan. So anything climate change, uh please engage me. We're putting a lot of funding into making sure that we get ahead. Once again, there's a lot to share, but I'll leave it at that. I won't, don't wanna take the rest of your time. But there's so much coming our way. Uh and so I just wanted to share that it's something that our community, our residents, are gonna benefit from directly and right away. So thank you so much for your time, and I hope that I can engage you separately, not in a council meeting, so we can go over in more detail all the policies and everything that we're working on. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you Senator, uh thank you Senator Rubio. Uh you know, I'm I'm excited. I don't know, I'm sure my colleagues are excited as well, especially hearing you and making and and hearing that you are taking care of the most vulnerable in our community, of course, immigrant families. You know, we live in Ballin Park, we live in the San Gamo Valley. There are some of the, you know, they they make up a big portion of our population. So I am excited to hear that, and I'm excited to hear that you're you're taking on efforts to fight displacement and gentrification, and of course, climate change, right? I don't know if any council members have any questions or concerns.
I'd like to say something, Mayor.
Yes, Mayor for ten.
And thank you for being here. Um it it's greatly appreciated um that you continue to work for our community. I know as a council member, you were very involved, and I'm very proud to to say that our councilwoman, now our senator, continues to work for this community and and for those that need the most help. I'm so proud of all the work you continue to do, and I look forward to continue working with you. And and I definitely need to talk to you so we can get more details um of what it is that you're doing. Thank you so much for all of your work, and we will continue working.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, thank you once again, Senator Rubio, for being here. We look forward to continue to update on your work.
Absolutely. Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
No, just absolutely thank you, and hopefully we can uh visit in person soon. But uh if LA Voice is listening, Beatriz, uh and I know Father Mike likes to listen and uh uh Mr. Flores, uh please engage me. I think this information is really important because it is difficult to navigate, especially for an immigrant community. Perhaps they don't have internet or resources, and we really need to get this information in their hands to make sure that they take advantage of of the information and the and the dollars that now that they can take advantage of. So thank you for your time. And to all the staff, thank you, and so great to see you. And wait, one more thing, Manny Corio, I'm working on many uh, you know, millions for parks and and open land. So I'm gonna engage you pretty soon on some of those dollars that are coming your way.
Thank you very much.
Exciting work, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
All right, have a good evening, thank you.
Good night.
Thank you for taking the time.
I believe we also have an update.
Thank you.
I believe we also have an update from the Valley County Water District, and it's presented by Colleen.
Uh good evening, Mayor. Uh I'm actually Jose Martinez, the general manager for Valley County Water District. I'll be making the presentation tonight. Hopefully, everybody can hear me. Uh we have not had the pleasure of meeting Mayor or and I think uh Councilman Damon. I believe we have met, but uh certainly good to see new members on the city council and uh and hello to all the other uh city council members as well that have made presentations. I've been here at the district now for about four years. Seems like it's gone by pretty fast. And actually, this is a a pretty important and a year. And if we can go back to slide number one of the presentation, um this is actually our ninety-fifth year uh anniversary. So I'll I'll provide a little bit more update on the some activities that we have planned, but certainly uh been a a proud and privileged to uh serve the cities of Azusa, primarily Ballin Park, Irwin Dell, and West Covina over the last ninety-five years and and continue to um do the best job that we can. Um moving on to the next slide, uh one thing I I wanted to to take the time is to just provide an update of uh certain things that have occurred over the the past year. Certainly, I don't have to go into too much detail of of how COVID nineteen has impacted all of our lives. Uh but one of the first things as the water district we had to address was just to continue to convey uh that the water that was being provided was safe. And I think that was uh early back in in the February, March timeframe. There was concern that the the water or the potable water supply uh would be a a means of 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 spreading the virus. Uh one of the bet, the the great benefits of 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 the treatment process of the water is that we add chlorine to the water. So certainly, as part of, oops. Okay, I think my computer's glitching, I don't know, that's everybody's screen. But certainly, as part of the process and the treatment, we add chlorine to the water. So that residual uh would uh disinfect or 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 kill any of the virus that may come in contact with the water. So certainly, as with hand sanitizer and any other type of cleaning product, that is one of the major uh processes is is to, you know, to ratify and and kill the bacteria. So that was one of the first things we conveyed, the message through social media, our website, and and phone calls that we were receiving. And and also, uh we had to make sure that we kept our our staffing uh healthy as well. Uh one of the one of the processes that we went through was actually closing our our office, our our headquarters and and our lobby. Um we still have not opened up our lobby. We are are looking and to uh will probably mirror uh some of the guidelines in California as we go from the um into the red uh tier and to the different lower tiers as when the numbers continue to drop. So uh but certainly, you know, conveying to our customers that uh we we are still open for business. We're still processing uh new new sign-ups. We're still, you can see us out in the street performing leaks. Unfortunately, one of the things that we cannot do remotely is fix leaks and do physical uh, you know, inspections of our system. Uh so we still have our 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 crews out there, um you know, providing that service to our customers. Let me go go to the next slide, please. Oh, recently, uh the the board of directors met to discuss uh the potential of a second delay. Uh back in uh first twenty twenty, our board of directors decided at the time that due to the COVID impacts and financial impact to to many of individuals throughout our our service area, uh that we uh the board decided to uh implement a six-month rate adjustment delay. Um that adjustment was about around the seven, eight percent uh adjustment or increase to to the rates. Um with the ongoing pandemic, it was the decision for the board to delay it until uh January first, twenty twenty-one. Um that date came, uh our board of directors uh did look at uh the financial uh stability of the district, and it was determined that the district was still in in a good financial position to implement and to uh add an additional six-month delay to those rate adjustments. Uh so with that, the presentation with was met. The board of directors discussed this potential, and they did did approve another six-month delay of those rate adjustments. So those rate adjustments will now be implemented in July first, uh twenty twenty-one. Uh another ongoing issue, as was discussed by by Senator Rubio with the with the the rent and certain forgiveness programs. Uh there is also stipulations for utilities of not being able to uh to shut individuals off during uh this pandemic. And so the district has also been monitoring uh how much actual uh delinquencies is is been compiling over the the past year. Um and uh we are just under the a three hundred thousand dollar mark. So we are certainly also, as many water agencies, uh they've done a compile of all the water agencies, and that that mark is nearing about two billion dollars in delinquencies of of rates uh throughout the state of California. So certainly, something that's being monitored and to and we are watching a certain legislation that is going on uh as well with the 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 rent forgiveness program, but as well of how those maybe uh be applied to potential individuals that have fallen behind in and their utility bills as well. One program that uh we are certainly glad to uh that was launched several years back, uh while uh Councilman Hernandez was on the board of directors, uh was the district's Affordable Rate Program. Uh this program uh is uh available for individuals, our our customers that qualify for the the programs through uh the gas company and Edison. Uh if they qua- qualify for their care program, uh they would then and qualify for our Affordable Rate Program. Uh we are currently, right now, looking to make adjustments to add a tiered system uh similar to what the gas company and Edison have done. Uh one, one thing we have to be careful of is the funding mechanism. Uh as a government agency, uh we cannot pull water rates to fund programs such as this. Uh we can only charge our customers exactly what it costs us to provide that water service. So in order to fund these programs, we have to have utilized money that is maybe acquired through cell phone tower leases or interest that is made from money that it is in reserve. So uh we do have those funding mechanisms that can provide and uh and hopefully expand this Affordable Rate Program to our customers in the near future. Next slide, please. As as discussed earlier, um I certainly appreciate uh the recognition for our staff that has been uh like everybody. Uh I can't say how proud I am of of my staff to continue to to work hard and to make sure that we're, we continue to provide safe, reliable, and affordable water to our our customers. But and not only in in keeping themselves safe and healthy, but also volunteering for the different community programs that have been uh put together by the the city, other partners, the school district. So certainly, any opportunity that we had uh during this uh this past year, uh it was certainly my honor and a privilege for all of staffing as well as board uh board directors to participate. So certainly, if there's anything else coming up, let us know. Um this was all volunteers by our staff. We we allowed them the time to go, but we uh it was strictly a volunteer process for them to uh participate in these events. So as I said, it the the feeling of 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 uh being a part of something bigger was was certainly, um you know, something that I will remember forever. And it was, like I said, it was just an honor for all of us to participate in these events. Uh next, next slide, please. Though, uh we certainly uh did not vision twenty twenty going this way. Um we had a a a big list of a bit, you know, some pretty significant projects. We have, you know, gone through the process of uh of issuing a bond to pay for a lot of projects that were identified in a master plan uh that was uh done back in two thousand thirteen. And uh by securing the funding, by doing uh a cost of water survey, we we were able to to have the funds to to really address some some issues that that needed to be addressed for several years. Um some of the major projects that we are currently working on right now is uh a new advanced meter infrastructure system. Uh we will be replacing all twelve thousand five hundred meters uh with uh an advanced system, which will allow us to uh remote, to receive remotely the the information for these customers. One of the biggest benefit to this program is to notify customers of a potential leak. If they're having twenty-four-hour movement on that meter, meaning, you know, there's a constant flow, that is not something that is a norm. So that would identify to us, and we can identify or notify the the customer that they have a leak. So that will certainly help uh customers keep their bills down. Currently, right now, we bill on a bimonthly basis. So technically, a leak can go on for a month before we read that meter two months down the road. So this will certainly speed up that process um to to conserve and utilize that water as best we can. Uh we've spent a lot of time, we have a new district website, and we've been putting a lot of effort into public information. We have a lot of information uh that we can provide to our customers. I feel the more they know about their water resource, what's going on. Uh as the Senator mentioned, climate change, that certainly helps uh all of us to understand and to appreciate uh what a crucial thing water is, uh especially right now with the family that I have in Texas. Uh they're really understanding how crucial water is and especially electricity. But, you know, certainly, uh we can go a lot longer without electricity than we can for water. So so certainly, you know, coming up and providing that information in the event of the emergency and to utilize website and social media is something certainly we we've been trying to expand. Uh we just are near complete with the new booster pump station uh just off of Main Boulevard and and Joan Bridge. Uh this uh booster pump station will replace a a one that was uh constructed back in back in the fifty-sixties. Uh so certainly, having this new uh this new booster pump to move water efficiently throughout our system is 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 much-needed project, as I mentioned, that has been identified back in in two thousand thirteen. Uh we are are doing rehabilitation on all six of our reservoirs. Uh right now, uh we just started on Main Boulevard. Uh and next on the list will be our our infamous uh reservoirs on Ballin Park and Arrow uh with the mural on the side. So we still have to decide, you know, what we do as as far as when we do that, the retrofits on that and and how we, you know, go ahead and and repaint the mural or so that there's gonna be some discussions as that was, we get a little closer. But certainly happy to uh do some much-needed rehabilitation to these uh these steel structures. As much maintenance, preventive maintenance that you do to these types of structures would just extends uh the the livelihood. Um so certainly, uh being proactive uh will will be a cost-efficient in in the long run. And and another thing, uh we're uh in the process of updating updating our master plan. So certainly, we have identified uh all these projects, many of the projects that we see on this list, you know, several years ago, uh but not at work. So we're in the process of knocking those out. So now we have to look into the future to see what are the next things we have to do uh to make sure that we continue to provide safe, reliable water are to our customers. Uh we have nearly uh over a hundred and fifteen miles of pipeline in the ground. And uh so we have to prioritize to see exactly which ones should we address and how we change those out. So certainly, uh uh you know, planning to do that on a proactive nature is is the best way to go about that, rather than doing it in the middle of the night or at an emergency situation. Next slide, please. Um last project that I I want to call attention to, this is certainly something that has been uh in process for the last ten years for the district. Uh I'm proud to announce that we recently just started uh construction of our new headquarters. It's uh located uh just south of Arrow on on Lanty Street. Uh this will uh provide a a additional community space, a demonstration garden. Uh this will unite our our administrative staff with our operations staff. Uh currently, where our operations staff is located off of Joan Bridge, uh just south of Arrow. Uh once we're done with this new headquarters, we're actually gonna demolish uh that operations headquarters and build two additional reservoirs, which again, were identified in that two thousand thirteen master plan. Um and add that additional capacity of water uh for water, water demands and also fire demands as well. So we're certainly excited about the this new project. Uh we hope to for it to be done in January, if not February, twenty twenty-two. And uh and as I mentioned, you know, over ten years, and uh we're finally, you know, turning shovel. So uh we've been working with city staff uh to make sure this project is uh have the coordination between the district and the city uh and uh hope to have this facility um available as for community use. And really want to expand our our engagement with the community and also with the Ballin Park Unified School District uh and and really show them the potential uh opportunities there are in the water industry and really highlight the engineering, the science, the counties, and and all the different professions that we have in in the water industry. With that, uh next slide, uh as I mentioned, this is our our ninety-fifth anniversary. Uh typically, May is Water Awareness Month, and we are are trying to, we're in the process of of planning a a drive-through event uh near the new district headquarters in in around the May timeframe. So as soon as we get additional information of exactly how that uh event will work out, uh we we typically use the Ballin Park now and uh we'll we'll relay the message out to to city staff so we can invite as many of of our our community to participate in that event. Um a little bit of an update, uh we've had, uh as far as precipitation, there's been, we're certainly not near normal. A little bit of an update, we've had as far as precipitation, there's been, we're certainly not near normal. Last year, thankfully, we had a little bit of almost normal rainfall. This year, we're several inches short of that. So hopefully we, we get a couple more rain, rain events to kind to get a little bit more local precipitation. The local groundwater, which we are 100% dependent on, is, is, is dropping a little bit. So certainly as Senator Rubio mentioned, you know, concerns of, of, of climate change and, and just different ways in which the state of California is receiving precipitation is something that we collectively as a group are, are monitoring and certainly want to protect our natural resources as best we can. And that will certainly help us, you know, to keep costs under control as well. So certainly interested of potential funding that's out there, grant. One thing I didn't mention that we actually are in the process of receiving about 1.3 million in grant funds to pay for that new meter system. So certainly happy that we went through the effort to secure that money and to help offset the costs for that project. So I apologize. I know sometimes I go a little long. I get, I get a little excited. This, this water stuff tends to. I, I really enjoyed my job. So but on behalf of the district, on my board of directors, I really want to thank you for the time. If there's any questions, by all means, you can always reach me at my office or through email. And that's all I have to, to report tonight. Again, a pleasure to meet Mayor and thank you for our city council members.
Great. Thank you, Jose. Nice to virtually meet you as well. I'm sure once this is all over, we'll, we'll be able to meet each other in person and I'm looking forward to that. Thank you for your presentation. I do believe at this point we're going on to public communications. City Clerk, is there anybody looking to speak?
Hi, Mayor. Yes, we have three individuals and I'm gonna refer to our city clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you, City Clerk and thank you, Mayor. The first caller is Ralph Galvin. Let me try to hear now.
Hello.
Hi, this is Ralph Galvin.
Yes, hi. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Potem, members of the city council, staff and city of Baldwin Park community. It's been some time, but my name is Ralph Galvin, resident of Baldwin Park and new board member of the Valley County Water District. First off, I just want to congratulate Mayor Emmanuel Strada, Councilmember Monica Garcia, Daniel Damian and City Clerk Wally Garcia on your successful election. Also just wanted to take a moment to realize that I'm here to work together with the entire community of Baldwin Park, city staff and sort of my community. There's already a great amazing working partnership between all of us and the city of Baldwin Park and the Valley County Water District, and I know it will continue and only get better. If there's anything I can do or assist with, please don't hesitate to reach out. You received a good presentation by General Manager Jose with some exciting news. My colleagues and I are looking forward to celebrating our district's 95th anniversary with the entire community this year. What else did I want to say? Thank you for the certificate of tonight's, tonight for the food, drive-through food giveaway in January. Thank you to our Parks and Rec team, our public works, our police department and Councilmember Hernandez. That was hard working that morning. One thing for my plaque from the city council that I received back in December, thank you for that. And I just hope all of you are well. We happen to meet each other, but I hope you and your families are staying safe and healthy and look forward to seeing you all in person when the time allows us to. And thank you for your time and take care and have a great evening and yeah.
Thank you, Water Board Member Galvin. Nice to see that you're out there, not just as a, as an elected official, but also involved in the community. City Clerk, who's next?
Thank you, Mayor. The next caller is Beatriz Sandoval.
Hi. Beatriz?
Yes.
Hola. Hi, it's Emmanuel Strada, Mayor of Baldwin Park.
Hi, Mayor.
I, I believe you want to make a public comment?
Yes, please. Thank you. Thank you so much. Can I start?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Well, good evening all. Mayor Emmanuel Strada and all council members. I want to share my, this, this recognition I received this evening. We all those heroes in our community who provide their services and volunteer work in different ways to those in need. LA Voice is a non-profit multi-state, multi-dimensional organization who represent more than 60 churches, cinemas, temples in LA County. But I think of our local heroes, as Pastor Antonio Rios, Alicia Calante, Mario Lily Marcia, Leonado Quezada, Rosie Rios, Minerva. I, I can mention some, some of them because we are a big, big group, big team. But also I want to say thank you, Councilmember Dani Damian, to talk in Spanish for those who, that's volunteers who only speak Spanish, but they offer their services to our community. And I want to say to Senator Susan Rubio, we are here to continue to support our beloved community. We, we, we seek the bill, a driver license for the unaccompanied community. And we are here in a strong support for all initiatives to benefit immigrant communities. We belong each other, each others, and we belong to Baldwin Park. And also bravely, I want to say thank you to Ms. Jurico, Mrs. Sparza and Mr. Manny Carrillo for all the job they're doing. We are council neighbors and, and, and our seniors members. Because I believe we support their job, we show our moral values. I want to say thank you, thank you so much for all the job they're doing. This is my, my, my participation today. Thank you so much for all your work.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Beatriz. And of course, thank you to the LA Voice team who's always involved. I know Beatriz has been involved for years in the community and on that she, she cares a lot. And I'm, I'm really grateful to see her continued efforts even during, during the pandemic. City Clerk, who's next?
Catherine Lozier.
Hello.
Hi, is this Catherine Lozier?
Yes, sir.
Hi, this is Emmanuel Strada calling you from City Baldwin Park. You wanted to make a comment?
Yes, please. So thank you, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Potem, council members, community partners and fellow community members. And thank you again for this opportunity to speak. I wanted to share that the LA County Library is celebrating African American and Black History Month almost along with virtual programming for all ages, including book parties, virtual storytimes and art activities. This Saturday, we have two very special programs that are taking place. At 11 o'clock, we have an author talk with the local historian lecturer and author, Robert Lee Johnson. He'll be joining us to discuss two of his books, Compton and Notable Southern Californians in Black History. And he'll also be talking a little bit about an upcoming book on the history of Watson, Willowbrook. Excuse me, well, Watson and Willowbrook areas in Los Angeles. And then at 1:00 PM, we have an African American genealogy workshop celebrating and tracing your family history. Professional genealogist and family historian Charlotte Bocage will give instructions and provide a wealth of resources to assist researching your family's history. And this is great for both beginners and experienced researchers. And then one other virtual program that I wanted to highlight as well tonight was a program called What's New with Resumes. The job searches is always evolving and professional career coach Liz Moller will be here to help. In this program, Liz will be reviewing resume basics and also digging into what's changed about resumes within the last few years. So this, this workshop is ideal for both first time resume writers and those who are experienced workers who just want to know what's trending now in the world of resumes. So for anybody who's interested in more information on these programs or any library services, please feel free to visit lacountylibrary.org or give me a call at the Baldwin Park Library at 626-962-6947. Thank you all so much. Agreed.
Great. Thank you for that. City Clerk, is there anybody else?
No, Mayor. That concludes our public comments section.
Great. So at this moment, I move to close public communications. And now we move on to consent calendar. Is there any items? Yes, go ahead.
Yes, before we do that, I'd like to, well, first of all, I'd like to respond to some of the comments during public communications and, and I'd like to thank Board Member Ralph Galvin for his comments. And I'd also like to congratulate him on his recent election to the Valley County Water District. So I appreciate, you know, him reaching out and expressing his willingness and, you know, to, to work with us and, and the community. And that is very much the Ralph Galvin that I've known for, for many years. So thank you. I'd also like to close on behalf of Hector Elizalde, who is the deputy to Congresswoman Grace Napolitano. And he managed her Veterans Affairs among other policy issues and visited our city many times. You know, always very, you know, kind and responsive and a heart for, for service, especially to veterans. And so it was very sad to hear about his passing. And, you know, gone too soon and, and very, you know, very young. So want to extend our condolences and our, you know, just our sadness and our condolences at, at hearing about his passing. I also do want to mention, I know that we kind of chuckled about this at the beginning of the meeting, but I do want to say that I think it's important for us to really be, you know, respectful of our staff's time. You know, we come to this meeting twice a month, sometimes a little bit more. But, you know, staff is making themselves available even after hours so that we can have our meetings and, you know, they do, there's a lot of coordination that happens behind the scenes and well in advance of this meeting, just to make sure that everything runs smoothly. And if we just look at today, you know, there were about a combined like 30 minutes that staff was waiting to get started. And I know that they would never say anything and they wouldn't make an issue of it. But I'm just saying, you know, let's just be mindful of, of that when we're showing up to our meetings and just to move things along. You know, with knowing that they've put a lot of preparation into making sure that we get started at the time that we agendize and that we're moving things along efficiently. But, you know, at the same time, giving the time and space for conversation and for us to be thoughtful. So I, I'm, I want to hold myself accountable to that. And, you know, I definitely want all of us to keep that in mind as we move forward. Thank you.
Of course, I think we are all mindful of everybody's time. Of course, you know, with Zoom and everything going on and sort of this, there is gonna be certain time discrepancies. But of course, we are all here to do work. We are getting paid. We're all getting either a stipend, a salary or an hourly wage. So we're all here to do what we are here to do, right? So moving forward, any items, Council is looking a pool. I would say number 17 and number 18, of course. Is there any other number, any other items from council members?
No, Mayor, I was gonna pull 17. You, you, you're pulling 17, right? And 18?
Yeah, 17 and 18.
Yeah, that's, I was gonna pull 17.
Great. So if not, I can make a motion to pass items number one through 16 on the consent calendar, you know, excluding 17 and 18. Can I get a second?
Second.
Great. Any objections? No, seen none. So it passes. And now we move on to item number, we can do item number 17 first. I think we have a girl here and she can kind of talk to us about that program and that pilot program and what it consists of.
Yeah, Mayor. Yeah, so Manny Correa, you wanna go ahead and take over item 17?
Yes, yes. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Potem, councilmembers. Today we have Brielle Acevedo from the San Gabriel Valley Regional Housing Trust Fund. And she is here to give a presentation. In addition, we have our in-house expert, Euriko. And she could answer any questions as well and I'm available. And we will go ahead and pass it over to Brielle. Brielle? You would unmute yourself and Mark has the presentation.
Great. Thank you for having me. Okay, so as was mentioned, my name is Brielle Acevedo. I am the Regional Housing Trust Administrator for the San Gabriel Valley Regional Housing Trust. A little bit of background on the RHT, the organization was started last year by Senator Susan Reveal. Thank you very much legislatively through Senate Bill 751. So we just hit about a year of operations. And I'm here to tell you a little bit more about our most recent initiative, which is the Emergency Shelter Pilot Program. We can move on to the next slide. So I'm just gonna give you an overview of the need for emergency shelter in the San Gabriel Valley. The reason that we think tiny homes are a great solution, some successes in other cities that have implemented this and the way that the program would work. And the trust, the COG and the cities that choose to participate and then a timeline. So if we go to them. The next slide is talking about the emergency shelter need in the San Gabriel Valley, which looking at the 2020 homeless count, there were more than 3,000 people that were experiencing homelessness that were unsheltered in the San Gabriel Valley. And this number is expected to increase due to the pandemic. And so one of the other things that also happened is that congregate or shelters where, where a lot of people are staying together were closed due to the pandemic. So this really exacerbated the need for emergency shelter and makes tiny homes a great option to give people their individual spaces. So if we can move on to the next slide. So tiny home shelters, they're an interim housing solution. So somewhere to go to get someone who's experiencing homelessness and living on the streets into a safe place to stay while they're waiting to be connected to a more permanent housing solution. And the types of shelters that we're looking at are weatherproof and climate proof and provide a safe and decent place for people to sleep at night and store their belongings. So the picture here happens to be a, a pallet shelter. And then if we go into the next slide. So a couple of cities nearby have done this. Riverside has a emergency pallet shelter, which I think some of the staff at Baldwin Park may have toured or are planning to tour. Redondo Beach has also implemented this very, most recently, North Hollywood opened up a site. And there are also sites in Northern California and then in other states. Okay, so the parameters for the trusts program, we're looking at about three to four sites with five to 15 shelters per site. And this is going to make sure that there are economies of scale at the site, but also that there are enough resources to really attend to the, the clients that are staying at sites. Sites would be drug and alcohol free and there would be a local preference to make sure that the sites are really serving the people experiencing homelessness within your community. And there will be onsite services and security at each site. If we go to the next slide. So this was to kind of talk about the different roles. So the trust is providing capital funds to get the shelter or the tiny homes purchased onsite, prepare the site for, for the shelters and also help out with having a consultant and helping make sure the sites become operational, you know, working through any sort of temporary zoning or anything else that's needed to make the sites operational, that kind of technical assistance. And what we're asking of the city is some in-kind staff time, which I have already been very thankful to work with, with Manny and Euriko on, on some of this and help with selecting the site. So I know in your staff packet, there was a, a, a sample that might be used. and help with selecting the site. So I know in your, um, staff packet, there was a, a, a sample that might be used. And if we could go on to the next slide. So site selection criteria, we wanted something that was relatively flat. It's much more expensive if you have to do a lot of grading. Um, existing utility connections also bring down the cost. I think the sample site has all of these things. And then, um, fencing would be provided to make the sites secure for both the residents and the surrounding community. Okay. So next steps, we're wrapped today. Letter of interest. So while this is not a binding commitment, it lets the trust know that your city is interested in participating. And it helps us advocate for operational funds. So we are in talks with the county to secure operational funding and having these letters of interest from cities that wish to participate helps show that there is a genuine desire to do this in the San Gabriel Valley and helps us advocate for additional services. So, um, after we've collected letters of interest, we will work to formalize sites uh, with our interested member cities and then work through the processes to get them up and running. And then the next one, so I have a sample capital budget in here. This shows, you know, and approximates how much it would cost to procure the shelters, the, um, a case management office onsite to do some of that site prep work that we talked about. And then to also have technical assistance from a consultant and also some contingency. Um, if we go to the next one, then a sample operating budget. So that's the piece that we're working on right now to make sure that everything is provided to make these sites fully operational. And let's see, so some of the things that we identified that sites will definitely have restrooms, case management, security, electricity, both in the units and on the site so that the sites can be, um, well lit at night. Food for the clients that are staying there and also trash disposal. And some of the other things that we're planning to provide are, are laundry linen services and showers. Um, some of the nice to have things are, um, landscaping, a lot of the sites that have implemented tiny homes have done some sort of, um, succulents or small trees out or even, um, public art installations to make it, it feel like home. And if we go on to the next one, we're also looking to leverage community relationships. So anywhere that we can, um, leverage those relationships to help reduce the cost for the sites and, and to help increase community engagement and make this feel like a, um, a part of the community, we're going to be doing that. So, so working to see where we can get food donations, any sort of, um, clothing donations or hygiene. And then this also for in-kind talks about the kind of, uh, staff time that the city would be providing. And I, that about sums it up. So we're in February right now, the trust and the COG released a procurement to get the shelters themselves. We're working with cities to finalize sites. And we're optimistically looking at having our first site, um, up and running in July, but definitely having our sites, um, all onboard by the end of this year. And with that, I can, um, take any questions.
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead, Mayor Proton.
Um, hi, hi Brielle, and thank you for the presentation. Um, I, uh, one of the questions that I have, a lot of these homeless people, they have a lot of belongings. Do we have a place or a plan for the storage of these belongings?
Yes. So one of the reasons that, um, these homes are desirable for guests is that they can store their, their immediate personal belongings onsite. But the case management team that will be operating the site would work with them to dispose of any larger, um, belongings that didn't fit or, or weren't necessary anymore because they were going to be within a space. And, and there's a, so they'll work through that process to make sure that things are either stored offsite in a secure space or, or disposed of properly.
Okay. And you mentioned there would be one bathroom for every fifteen? That's, that seems like, uh, not enough.
That is the, the, the minimum requirement. I think some of the shower trailers that we've been looking at, you know, have like two bathrooms. One of them has to be ADA and you can't have the shower and the restroom within the same ADA stall. So there would be multiple restrooms. That was just to show what the, the acceptable ratio is. So that's, that's the, um, minimum standard. But yes, likely more.
And then you, you touched upon one of the questions that I actually had. You said that you would be, uh, providing, you know, some type of plants or trees. I think that would be really nice because the pictures I had seen, it was just sitting on dirt. So my idea is to make it look nice, like it's their own home or they can have pride. And I also saw that you will have a common area where they can sit down and dine together. I, I really like that also. And, uh, the caseworkers, they, they will be there twenty-four hours a day?
So it might be a split where it's a, a caseworker during the day and security at night, but, um, is still being finalized depending on our operational funding, but clients would definitely have access to, to case management.
Okay. And will they be allowed visitors?
You know, I don't actually know that, especially given, um, the current situation that we're in, but that's something we can, can report back on once we figure that part out.
Okay. Okay. I think that's all the questions you, I have. You pretty much touched everything on the rest of the questions that I had already, already brought up. To Manny. So thank you. Thank you for that.
And I think, uh, maybe just one important question, just so everybody's aware. I know that, you know, we're always worried about costs. And I know that you mentioned trying to get, uh, funding from the county. Is that correct?
Yes.
And then, so virtually, is there, is there a cost to the city or would it be minimal?
At this time, there is no cost to the city.
Great. Thank you. I just wanted you to confirm that. Um, I don't know if any of the council members have any, any questions?
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. Um, you know, I, I like the idea that we're looking at all different types of housing for, um, sheltering our homeless. And I think that tiny homes is definitely, you know, one of those solutions. My question is, is, um, I know that historically homeless are reluctant to go into shelters because of the shared space and because they, you know, they're afraid of, um, I mean, I'll just put it out there, you know, like sexual assault and, um, just some of the risks that come with living, you know, with people that are strangers essentially. So when I hear about the restrooms, you know, um, being like one per fifteen, i- is that something? I mean, what, what are your thoughts around that? I'd like to hear from you and what you've seen, observed, um, you know, what, what has been some of the, the response to, to this type of housing? Uh, because I like that, you know, there would be individual units, but then the shared space is what is of concern for me.
I haven't heard any, um, restroom specific issues on, on sites that are operational, although that's a good point to bring up and something to definitely talk to the, the service provider that will be managing the site to make sure that, um, that that's being monitored. But, um, anecdotally, what we've heard from, from people that have moved into tiny home shelters is that, you know, that, that fear that they were having living on the streets is immediately fixed by the fact that you have a door that closes and a, and a feeling of security within your space. Like you can actually go to sleep at night and, and feel like, like you're going to make it through the night and be safe. Um, I think your point about restrooms is, is definitely good for us to talk about with the service provider when selected. But I, I haven't actually, um, heard any issues there. And, and for showers and, and things of that nature, these things are monitored. So, so there's a, a, um, shower provider, you know, that comes, brings you your, your fresh towel, make sure that the, the shower is cleaned. And I think that that kind of oversight would, would help alleviate any potential issue there.
Hmm. Yeah. Um, I think that if we were going to explore this, you know, in greater depth, I'd like to see how our city, um, could possibly even supplement, you know, some of this project to create more showers, um, to create more bathrooms. Because that is something, uh, I used to work for United Way. And, you know, homelessness has been a priority for the organization, United Way Greater Los Angeles. And, you know, this was kind of one of the, the challenges that we were aware of is, you know, some people that have been chronically homeless are reluctant to go into shelters because of that shared space or simply because, you know, they're not used to even being sheltered. But that's, you know, we, we, we could have, we could look at all angles as to why people are unsheltered or why they're chronically homeless. But I, I do recall that that was kind of one of the, you know, people are reluctant to go into the shelters. Um, so I would like to see if we do look at bringing something like this to our city. I'd like to see how we could increase the number of bathrooms and, um, you know, that shares, that, that shared space so that at least it's, it becomes, um, you know, there's, it's not one per fifteen, perhaps we can look at, you know, a, a greater number per fifteen or something, you know, there's, um, it's less, it's, it's not as limited, I guess, is I, what I'm trying to say, uh, for the individuals that are going to be living there. You know, they don't have just one bathroom to choose from. They now have, you know, several, and, and perhaps it could even be attached to, um, you know, a, a cluster of units or something like that. But I'd like to look at that specifically in our city and see how we could supplement a, a project and, and just make it, you know, just, um, safer and, and try to ease or eliminate, you know, some of those concerns. Those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Then maybe just, can you elaborate? Is there, uh, you know, like security onsite? Is it how safe it is? And, you know, of course, um, you know, there's residents always have those kind of concerns and questions regarding, uh, you know, a, a sort of a homeless shelter or anywhere where we're gonna house the homeless.
Definitely. Um, the operating budget that we included includes overnight security. This is going to be something that we're going to talk to the county and the service provider about to see if that needs to be increased to include daytime security as well, or if the case manager can really help with that role. Um, we can also talk about doing community partnerships and, and, you know, leveraging potentially some city services to have a backup plan for if there, if there is a need for additional response at the site. Um, something that I just thought of in terms of, um, bringing people indoors and making them comfortable. The fact that we're looking at, at housing people locally, I think is going to be really important. So you're not asking someone, you know, to, to go to downtown or to go to a city that's twenty-five miles away from, from where they feel comfortable. The fact that there is an option that is within a space that they already consider to be their home, I'm, I'm hopeful will, will help alleviate some of that hesitancy to come inside. And, and once we have, um, more details and, you know, we've selected a site and we're moving forward with, with additional approvals, we can definitely come back to council and, and get into more specifics of, of budgeting and, and exactly what will be provided, um, at all times at the site.
Great. Thank you. Um, I don't know if any other council members have any questions or concerns or maybe city staff?
Mayor, I ju- just like to reiterate that we will incorporate best practices with the other agencies that are administering this program. And at, at the staff level, we will definitely re-refine, uh, all of the different elements, uh, associated with this project. So, thank you.
Thank you for that. And I think, I think it's a great idea. I mean, you know, it's, I, from what I understand, they're, they're high quality shelters. They're, they're temperature controlled. They, they have a door. They're safe. And of course, you know, it's, 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 it's a lot better than being on the street and then having access to that restroom is much, much better than, you know, not having any access to any restroom, right? So, uh, there's, there's a lot of great things with this. And I know that, uh, Eurico and Manny and the rest of Parks and Recs are also working, at the same time on, on Measure H and, and those programs. So I think it's, it's a great boost. It's, it's two great things to come to the city at the same time. So I'm looking forward to this. Uh, if council doesn't have any more, uh, questions or concerns, I'd make the motion to pass item number seventeen. Can I get a second?
A second, Mayor.
Thank you. Any objection? No. So item seventeen passes. Thank you, Brielle, for your time. I, I, uh, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Looking forward to process. Yes. And of course, thank you, Eurico, and thank you, Manny. I know you guys have been working diligently during the pandemic and of course throughout the, the homeless efforts for the past couple of years. So I'm very grateful for that. And at this point, we can move over to item number eighteen. And I believe Mayor Proton is joining me, and that is the approval of employment agreement with Robert A. Lopez for the position of Chief of Police. Before, uh, we, you know, before we, we, we vote on this item, I do want everybody to know that this was a transparent process, that we did go through a process and that, that we, that we did go through a, a, a fair process. Uh, I know that there has been, uh, you know, some sort of commotion out there and that's just not the case. I also know that, uh, Chief Lopez was, was approved by, by former councils. So I am, I'm confident in our decision. I, I've spoken with chief. I've taken the time to talk to him. I know that our council members have as well. And I am confident that he has the energy and the expertise to get our, our, our police department moving forward and stabilized. Councilmembers, do you have any comments or concerns, questions?
Yeah, Mayor, I just wanted, uh, if I may?
Yes, Councilmember Damian, please.
Yeah, I also want to, uh, reiterate what you just said in regards to, uh, it being a fair process. I mean, there were a few applicants, however. Uh, we also have to keep in mind that Chief Lopez was put in here as an interim chief back in July, uh, of last year. And we just felt that he was the appropriate man for the job. Um, and I think that all of us as a council agreed that he was the right man to move this department forward. Uh, and with that, that's the reason why we voted him to, uh, be our next Chief of Police.
Great. Thank you for that. So at this moment, I do, uh, make the motion to pass number item eighteen. Can I get a second?
Second.
Great. Any objections? No. So item eighteen passes. And I believe at this point, I will move forward to, uh, give the oath to our Chief of Police, Robert Lopez. Get out of the way. So this is the execution of the oath as required by Article, uh, twenty, Section three of the Constitution of the State of California. I state your name.
I, Robert Lopez.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies.
And the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the State of California.
And I'll bear truth.
No worries. I, I started to. I will bear the faith and allegiance to the, I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution.
I'll bear true faith and, and allegiance to the Constitution.
Of the State of California.
Of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Thank you, Chief. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I have one to come up. I'll take a picture of you guys. Or you have a photographer.
Yeah. So Chief wants to, uh, grab a quick shot so we can let him do that. Yeah, so Chief wants to grab a quick shot so we can let him do that.
Thank you for letting us have your dad, husband, and brother.
I believe at this point, we are moving on to the city council.
Uh, yes. Thank you. Before we move on, can we please have Chief Lopez say a few words to our, our residents?
Yeah.
Chief, do you want to give her some words?
I just wanted to say thank you for the tremendous honor and opportunity that you all have given me. I'm looking forward to working with the community, looking forward to working with the entire council. I am just a blast and I, and, and a little bit of words. I don't generally speak publicly because I'm a little shy, but I just wanted to say thank you to you all and to, and thank you to the community for their, for their trust, legal support. I'm not going to let you down. I'm not going to let the council down for their, for their faith in me. You know, it takes a lot to, to be in this position. You know, I have a strong base within the department. So there, there's a lot of great things that this department has already done and will continue to. So I'm just very excited and thankful for the opportunity that you all have given me. So thank you to you all. Thank you very much. And thank you.
I want to take the opportunity also to thank Chief Lopez and his family. You can't see them, but his family are in the background. Social distancing. I want to, I want to tell our, our Baldwin Park community that I think Chief Lopez will do an excellent job. I know there's a lot of things that need to be fixed, a, a lot of work to be done in our community, and I have faith that if we work together, we will get everything done. So Chief Lopez, welcome to the city of Baldwin Park. I, I ask everybody at police department, our city, our residents, let's give him a chat. Let, let's again, work together so that we can move forward. Thank you.
Yes. Of course, thank you for that.
If I may?
Yes, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you very much. Again, Chief Lopez, congratulations on this evening. You know, we've known each other for a little while, but, you know, during that period of time, you've certainly, you know, shown your character and your resilience. So I wish you the best of luck. I know you have a lot of, a lot of challenges in front of you. And that is something in which, you know, all of us expect a lot of good things from you and also from the men and women of the department that are sworn and also non-sworn. So again, congratulations on being named Chief of Police for the city of Baldwin Park. And we look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Yes.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Councilmember Damian.
Yes, again, congratulations, Chief Lopez. We are excited to have you on board and I want to echo what Vice Mayor Avila said. We want to work together. I know that you're the right person to move this department forward. I know that there's a lot of work to be done with our police department, but I'm very confident that with you and all of us working together, we can move the department in the right direction and I'm looking forward to working with you along with my council colleagues so that we can move our police department forward. Again, welcome and congratulations on being the official Chief of Police.
Thank you again. Thank you.
Yes. And I, I, I just want to reiterate that I am, I'm confident that once the pandemic is over and we can introduce Chief to the community, that they will approve of him and, and welcome him as well.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Chief. Congratulations. And I echo the, the comments of my colleagues. And I know that you'll be great for our department. I know that we need a, a strong and stable leader right now and you know, we need to bring our department to become more current. And so I, I look forward to working with you, you know, to for this entire council and this, and city to work with you to, to move things along in the right direction. So thank you and, and congratulations.
Thank you. And I'm really looking forward to working with you all and especially the community. That's, that's great. Thank you so much.
Yes. Thank you for that, council members. And of course, thank you, Chief, for joining us.
Mayor, may I say something?
Yeah, is that Marie Contreras?
That is.
Go ahead, go ahead, Treasure.
Okay, Chief Lopez, I just want to say thank you for taking the risk to be in Baldwin Park. Thank the council for choosing you. You must be the perfect person. Otherwise, you wouldn't be chosen. And God bless you in your new journey and be safe. And thank you for being the man that you are. That's it.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Great. Is there any other?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other city staff willing to make a comment before I move on?
Hi, Mayor. Just quickly, this is, this is City Clerk Marlene Garcia. Chief, congratulations. Welcome to the city of Baldwin Park. It is, it is a city with a lot of potential and with the right people in place, we could take it to very high places. So look forward to meeting you in person and look forward to working with you as well. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Great. And of course, thank you, city staff. At this point, I do believe that is the end of the agenda. So I will move forward to City Council acting as successor agency of the SALT Community Development Commission. There is a consent calendar and I will make a motion to pass that. Is there a second?
Second.
Any objections? No? And so that passes. And I believe at this point, we don't have anything else on this agenda. So I will move to adjourn the meeting.
Mayor, sorry.
Oh, yes.
I know I didn't put it on the agenda. I'm sorry. I, I do like, I do have a request.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make the request to direct staff to do a study session, to have some discussions with our school district, district personnel, our city police, district police, and discuss how we can help the school district with the safety of our stu- of the students. I want to see if there's a way we can collaborate to make sure that our students are safe, that they are provided trainings for when they're in school, a way that we can work together. So if we can have a study session and invite, again, district personnel, school police, city police, city staff, so we can have this discussion. Our students are priority. We need to make sure they're safe. So I would like to have that conversation so we can schedule a study session for that. And that is my request.
Yeah, okay. And then is that a, just double check before we all agree on it? Shannon, that's a possibility?
Yes, in fact, the council did set up a, a school-city committee and we're trying to get that going to meet. And the chief and I also have been talking with the superintendent about the school safety and school policing. So I will talk to the superintendent about that.
Yes, so we can schedule a study session so our of us could be part of it, please.
Yeah, great. And, yeah, that's what I was going to say. Mayor Potem is not in that, that standing committee, right? So yes, so she can be involved in it and and, and, you know, and say what she needs to say. Yeah, we can do that. So did you make a motion, Mayor Potem?
Um, do I need to make a motion or just?
I think we do, we do it just so that we know that there's a. Great. Second? Is there any objection? No? Great.
Sir Mayor, if I may add?
Uh, yes, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you very much. I like for, this is a request for Laura and for Shannon, the executive staff. If you can please develop an organizational leadership program that creates effective managers, but also more importantly creates and develops and fosters leadership traits and qualities throughout our entire organization. This is something in which I'd like to see throughout the organization as people then, you know, promote their, as they promote, they have the ability and the skill sets needed to not only be excellent managers, but more importantly terrific leaders. So if we could have staff, please bring that back at a study session or as a, as a draft report for the council to look at at a later time, perhaps in, you know, two to three meetings from now, that would be terrific. Thank you.
Mayor, I have something else, sorry.
Uh, yes, go ahead, Mayor Potem.
I don't know if this is possible. If, if there's a way to create a commission, an independent commission to review police complaints or things that may be happening in our police department. Again, we have a new Chief of Police on board and we want to look for a way that we can help resolve problems within the police department with stuff that may be happening before they escalate. So maybe create an independent commission, look for ways to review processes to make sure everything's in place and so that we can continue to move forward. I don't know. Robert, is, is there a, a way that we can create a commission for our police department to review things like that?
Vice Mayor, yes, that would just be up to the prerogative of the council if they wanted to set something up like that. I would think that if you did want to set something up like that, you'd probably want to have a study session on that and really, really tease that out.
I thi- I think it would be a, a good idea. We can look into it. We can have a neutral party looking at, at situations that may be happening within the police department, of course, with, with it all being legal. That's why we need to make sure the processes that we would be taking would all be legal to do investigations and things. Again, that may be happening with our police department and that way we know it's neutral and it's transparent. And our staff knows that, that we are taking care of them and if they're concerned for anything, that we are looking into their concerns and to, to fix whatever may be happening. Chief, of course, you would have to be one of the the main persons in there to make sure that our, our commissions are working and working for your, for your department. So everybody can work together.
That is my suggestion.
I, I agree with, with Mayor Potem. I think, I know that certain cities have kind of like an oversight committee and it kind of gets the community involved and it, and I think it can foster a better relationship amongst everybody, right? So I, I agree with Mayor Potem. I think we can have a study session on this.
Thank you.
Great. Any more, any more comments, questions, concerns before I adjourn the meeting? No? If not, at this point, I do move to adjourn the meeting. Can I get a second?
Second.
Again.
Uh, any objections? No? So meeting is closed. And at this point, I do move to open up the Baldwin Park Housing Authority regular meeting. I believe a roll call, City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor Emmanuel Estrada.
Here.
Mayor Potem, Alejandra Avila.
Here.
Councilmember Daniel Damian.
Here.
Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Paul Hernandez.
Great. Any public communications? City Clerk?
No.
Great. Okay, so motion on pass consent calendar. Can I get a second?
Second.
Great. Any objections? No? At this moment, I have moved to adjourn the meeting. Can I get a second?
Second.
Great. Any objections? No? That meeting is closed. And at this point, I move to open up the Baldwin Park Finance Authority regular meeting. City Clerk, roll call.
Yes, Mayor Emmanuel Estrada.
Here.
Mayor Potem, Alejandra Avila.
Here.
Councilmember Daniel Damian.
Here.
Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Here.
And Councilmember, Councilmember Paul Hernandez.
Present.
Great. Any public communication?
No.
Great. So at this moment, I move to pass consent calendar. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second.
Any objections? No? And at this moment, I move to adjourn the meeting. Can I get a second? Great. Any objections? No? So meeting is adjourned. I believe that's all for tonight. So I guess we're done. Yeah, good night, everybody.
Good night.
All right. Bye, everybody. Good night, everybody.
Good night.